It's nine o'clock. Welcome everybody to the meeting here on March 27, 2020. We'll have a moment of silent meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance and approval of the minutes for our March 12, 2020 meeting and our March 20th, 2020 emergency meeting.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since you all have an opportunity to look at the minutes, do you have the minutes?
I did.
For the meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 12 and March 20.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have. At 9:15, we have a appointment with Susan Kizik, Upsher County Health Department Nurse Director, and Brian Shrews, Upsher County Department of Homeland Security Emergency Manager Director. Provide a COVID-19 update. At 9:45, approval and signature of fiscal year 2021 community-oriented policing service, HOPSS, school violence prevention program, SBPP.
I joined.
On behalf of the Upsher County and Lewis County Board of Education. If awarded, the grant will provide updated emergency notification telephone systems to both Upsher and Lewis County Board of Education. At 11:00 AM, we have a meeting with the elected officials in front of the discussion continuing operations as they related to COVID-19. Moving on, items for discussion, action, or approval. Item one, approval and signature of the 2020-
Susan Kizik, Upsher County Health Department. I joined.
Board of Review and Equalization Meeting Minutes. Item two. Can we, I have it.
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Been moved and seconded on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have.
I'm going to interrupt you for one second, Terry. Whoever just joined the call if you could please mute your line.
Item two, approval and signature of Upsher County 2020 to 2021 fiscal year budget.
So of course this year's budget balanced the amount of $8,581,286. Your press release was released after you concluded your meetings last week. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
I think so.
I have any questions?
The deadline to submit is tomorrow at State Attorney's Office and Carol will be forwarding this on after today's meeting or tomorrow.
Thank you, Carol, for your office helping out our office to get everything prepared and other circumstances.
Appreciate that.
That's what we're here for.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
I'll second the motion.
Been moved and seconded on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have. Item three, approval and signature of an order allowing the commission to join with the Upsher County Development Authority to form a joint development entity as permitted under Chapter 7, Article 12 of the Code of West Virginia. This entity is required to receive new market tax credits for the innovation center.
Rob Hinton's on the line. Rob, would you mind giving a brief summary of the joint entity?
Sure. So the joint entity is basically a special purpose entity where a project that is eligible for new market tax credits funding and when new market tax credit funds are utilized, the project itself, in this case, is a physical real estate asset, must be placed within the special purpose entity. And this is by the code that dictates new market tax credit, the program, as well as it mitigates risk for the investor that is purchasing the new market tax credits that the project utilizes to complete construction and successfully get the project done.
We do have the Development Authority's attorney on the line as well that's been working on this. If you have any questions for her and then the prosecutor attorney, Brian Eagle, has also reviewed the documents and just made some slight changes.
Can he's comfortable with it?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you all, thank you.
Item four, correspondence from Shane White, area Executive Director of Region 7 Planning and Development Council regarding small cities block grant recipient requirements to affirmatively further fair housing approval and signature of a resolution proclaiming April 2020 as fair housing month. Shane on the line?
No, would you like me to read them?
Do you have the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have. Item five, approval and signature of Mountain Air Trail Network Appalachian Regional Commission, ARC, power implementation grant letter of support. Actually, that's going to go through Lewis County, isn't it?
I think it's 15 counties.
It's a network of 15 counties, which Lewis and Upsher were just added to that group in this last legislative session.
Okay, down motion.
Is that moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have. Item six, approval and signature of an agreement between the Department of Arch, Cultural and History, Culture and History for and on behalf of Archives and History for and on behalf of Records Management and Preservation Board and the Upsher County Commission for Fiscal Year July 1, 2020, or June 30, 2021.
I joined.
Is for personnel cost to scan and index records in the amount of $3,000 in the assessors' office and digitizing chancery and civil order books in the amount of $10,000 in the circuit clerk's office with a 10% tax mask to be approved, to be provided by this county. Down the motion.
Is that moved?
Second.
Been moved and seconded on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have. Item seven, correspondence from Sheriff David H. Kaufman requesting a lateral transfer of Christopher Langer from part-time Circuit Court bailer to full-time law enforcement administrative assistant effective March 29, 2020 at the pay rate of $11.22 per hour. Item may lead to executive session for West Virginia Code 6-9A-4. Anybody wish to move into executive session?
I do not. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded on favor to approve, on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have. Item eight, correspondence from Sheriff David H. Kaufman requesting a lateral transfer of Mark Cunningham from Court Security Officer to Circuit Court Bailiff effective March 20, 2020 at the pay rate of $12 per hour. Item may lead to executive session per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4. Will Mark remain as a part-time?
Yes.
Okay. Down motion.
Is that moved?
Second.
Been moved to approve, on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have. Item nine, correspondence from Sheriff David H. Kaufman requesting the employment of Roger Lee Davis as a fill-in Court Security Officer effective March 29, 2020. Item may lead to executive session per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4. Anybody wish to go into executive session?
No.
I did talk to sheriff this morning and he advised that the pay rate would be the normal hiring rate for Court Security Officers, but there's a little up and down.
Thank you.
In this, in this position, just to help for call-offs and-
Correct, and instead for Roger's appointment or on vacation, this individual would fill in. We're not expecting him to cost any additional money to the county as they'll be working when someone else is off. That's already been covered.
I'll make a motion real quick.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have. Item 10, correspondence from Toni C. Noonan, Fire Feed Clerk, requesting to decrease her work hours to 44 hours per week, per pay period, effective April 1, 2020. Item may lead to executive session per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4. Anyone wish to go into executive session?
I do not.
So we are actually decreasing to 22 hours?
Well, it would be an average of 44 hours per pay period from an under-.
Right, right, right. 22 a week.
You did?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, ayes have. Item 11, approval of Lewis, Upsher Animal Control Facility volunteer Hannah Greenland.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve, on favor, signature five, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no.
Just so there's, so there's no confusion, we're not allowing volunteers at the pound at this time, or this volunteer obligation, wasn't that it? So we're adding to it.
Thank you, Terry. For your information, certain items may require discussion, action, or approval by the commission. Item one, order of the Public Service Commission of West Virginia entering March 18, 2020 regarding petition for consent and approval to enlarge the service territory of Temerton Public Service District.
This order does refer the case to a division of administrative law judge for a decision to be rendered on the matter on or before October 15.
Okay. Moving on to item two. Announcement of fiscal year 2021 litter control grant application offered to the West Virginia, WBDP, REEP, litter control grant program. Item three, press release, Secretary Warner encourages West Virginians to vote early and absentee in the May 12 primary election. Chair will decide.
Well, actually, we are working with the Secretary of State's office and the decision has been made to send absentee ballot applications via postcard to every registered voter in West Virginia. So we are working on getting contracts with printing vendors and things like that to get these out. There will be more releases, I think the governor is going to make a release, but the target date to get these in the mail are at this point, April the 6th. So anyone who's already received, has already returned an absentee ballot application, we're going to try to cut those out, you know, so that we don't double, you know, double spend, so.
Well, thank you for all your work down there, Carol.
Yes.
Trying times, I bet.
Yes.
And if there's any commission, do you need to help, you'll let us know.
Yes. You know, the best thing I can say and encourage is absentee, absentee, absentee. It's going to be hard to manage crowds, to keep my coworkers safe. We are going to be coworkers who just don't want to work because they don't want to be exposed, you know, and, and quite frankly, it's hard to get anything, you know, wearing masks and it's, you know, the medical profession is at worst than what I think we do, but they feel like that they, you know, it sounds quite like that, but I mean, it's essential that a medical personnel have them, so I'm working on creative ways of maybe trying to get masks for the coworkers, but we'll see.
Are you already getting requests for the absentees?
Uh, yes. I received 15 in the mail today.
I talked to the people who said they were sending this.
Yes, and we, and my office, we're just taking lots of phone calls about people wanting us to mail applications. And honestly, we're, we're really happy to mail them even though they're going to be doing a mass mailing because it sort of lets us flow with getting those absentee ballots in the mail.
That's going to be a statewide campaign to push this?
Yes, there is going to be a statewide campaign to push this, so, and, you know, keep in mind that election day is probably going to look a little different for precinct wise and, you know, if we get closer to that date, I think it's, you know, we're just going to have to be flexible.
Right.
Carol, at this time, would you like people to continue to mail in?
Absolutely.
It, it makes it a little easier for you if they do?
Well, you know, what will happen is if they continue to do it now, then we can have the, it gives us time to get the applications processed, then mail, that sort of stuff. You know, if we get a thousand applications in one day, once people get this, quite frankly, we can't process a thousand applications in one day. I mean, it's, we have just an office staff of two or three and trying to keep our distance, you know, so.
Can you explain the process of how it works with the absentee ballot real quick for residents?
Sure.
Go through this.
Sure. Basically, the first thing you have to do is you have to apply for the absentee ballot. So there's an application, you need to fill it out and you're in handwriting, sign it, and then forward it to the office. You can either send that to us at Upsher County Clerk at 40 West Main Street, room 101 of Cannon. You can fax it to either 304-472-1029 or 304-472-9486, either place. You can email it to me at CJSmith@UpsherCounty.org or you can email it to Upsher County, UpsherCounty@WDSOS.com. Sorry, that's not my name as much. But once we receive the application, we will send you the absentee ballot in the mail. If you are registered as a nonpartisan, you need to request the ballot style that you would like to have. And at this point, we have either the Republican ballot or the Democrat ballot, or you just get the nonpartisan part of the ballot. So we'll forward you the ballot, the instructions of what you do, you fill that ballot out at your leisure, and then you just, we send you all the materials to return it back to us. You just, we even include your return post of sand, so that's part of it, so the sand's already on there and you just have to drop it in the mail. The big thing here is, is that you either have to have it postmarked by election day, which is May the 12th, or you have to return it in person before- or you have to return it in person before May the 11th. I guess so March time, May the 12th. So you have to return it by May 11 or postmarked by May 12. Okay? And then we mark your voting history that you voted, and there you go.
Got it.
So any questions on that one?
No, just maybe for some people that don't realize, once you get those, can you explain how those, I've seen that process, but not everybody probably knows how you count those?
Well, when, when there, you get a couple envelopes in it. The first envelope is the envelope where we mail it to people. So that envelope, you can just throw that envelope away. Once you get your ballot, you can throw it away. The inner envelope is the envelope that has your name, you have to sign it, and there's a little bit of information that it asks on there, so the voter needs to fill that information out. And then you have the third envelope that is just a plain blank envelope. You will put your ballot with the stub attached into that envelope, seal it in there, and then you're going to put that plain envelope inside the envelope that you've signed your name on. Once it comes into my office, we have to stamp it in that we've received it, we sign it that we've gotten it, and we put it into a sealed, locked ballot box where the county commission president has the key. You guys all have keys to this box, it takes all of us to unlock the box. Generally, on election day, we will seal those, we will have teams of people that will separate the envelopes. So the name, the envelope that has your name on it is separated from the envelope that's just completely blanked. So everything is anonymous, we have no idea at this point you did what. Those envelopes are put away, and we have teams of people who then unseal the, the envelope that's blanked, and they tear off the stubs, make sure that the ballot's marked properly, make sure that, you know, we've done our job, that it has our signatures on it, which we always do that. And then we put them into the tabulator. Now, it's my understanding, we have, we're going to have massive amounts of these. So what we may do is, we're going to be allowed to actually put those, do the same thing, but go ahead and start tabulating them and putting them into the DS200s prior to the closing of the polls. You know, if we have thousands of them, you know, those DS200s are, you know, they're very accurate, they're a little slow, and I think we experienced that in 2018. So there's no way we, we'll never get done on election night. So the, the rules allow us to be able to do that. So what we may do as we get closer, we may, and it will be, you know, for, there'll be more curves, you know, people that can come in, teams of, you're required always to have, you know, certain Republicans, a set of Democrats, work together to process them, that there's no changes or anything like that. So we may have to do that, and, you know, that's the goal here, is to try to make sure on election night we have these processed as quickly as we can, so.
We're probably still going to have several ballots coming in after the 12th, since that's the...
Anyone who gets it postmarked before the May 12 deadline, we will be able to accept those and count those during our canvassing process that will start on Monday, May the 18th, is that the right day? I'm sorry, whatever the fall through Monday is, I think it's the 18th. So as they come in, we'll stamp those in, mark them, and we'll process those then once we're done our canvassing.
Thank you.
That might be good for people to hear, so that's what happens there, so I appreciate that. Because I was asked that question a few times this week.
Yes, and I, and I will tell you, the election rooms are locked to this point that once we start processing ballots, my early voting workers are given keys and you at my office cannot get into there without other people being in there. So the rooms are completely sealed, no one can get in without someone or a team of someone else being with them.
Thank you very much. Item four, notice of proposed adoption or amendment to municipal zoning ordinance by the council of the city of McCannan. This is on the zoning of the Old Armory.
No, this, I believe, is on the Brushing Board property, and the reason you're provided notice is because you're adjacent property owner, because the law does not let us. They're on the line.
Oh. Sorry about that. Suzie?
Sue, Dr. Reed, and Brian, are you still all on the line?
Yes, yes, we are here.
Ma'am?
We have a 9:15 meeting with Suzie McKissick, Upsher Buckey County Health Department Nurse Director, and Brian Shree, Upsher County Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management Director to provide COVID-19 update.
So in your email, Tabitha just forwarded a one-page document from Dr. Reed that I believe he's going to be covering while on the call. I would just like each of you, if you could take turns speaking, and if you could please turn off any background noise that you may have in your office, that would be helpful. Dr. Reed, did you want to start?
I gave you and printed a document which says most of the things that I want to say. Command everybody who works hard trying to pull things together. I think the health care, people have made major efforts to be prepared as best they're able and not knowing all the details. It's sometimes difficult, but I know the hospital has expanded rooms that are available for patients if needed, separated. The patients are coming in to be seen to those who are potentially infected so that there's a minimal chance of contamination of the personnel there. Nursing halls made significant efforts. The meeting that we're having twice, twice a week with about 30, 20 out of 30 stakeholders in the county, I think it has been a positive exchange of information trying to let all know where the others are in case of need. And Jeff Harvey, I think deserves a lot of credit for helping pull that together. As of paper today, I assume will be some public information that comes out of that, that the expectations flow to general public in, in the effort to hopefully answer some questions and to decrease the need for informational calls that lots have been established hopefully to alleviate anxiety and to provide informative information. Declarations of emergency that made by the mayor, the county commission, governor, president, so that decisions, more expedient decisions can be made in relationship to dealing with the issues as they come up. Schools have been closed, I think that they deserve major credit for their efforts at providing food to individuals in need and also for transforming to online education packets that they've sent out. College, of course, is closed, and they are doing the same thing of online education. I think that this will be a, possibly a high awakening to how education can be done in the future, and I hope that all of us will learn something from the issues that have come to us. The economic effects undoubtedly will be significant, and we don't know what, what the full extent of that will be. It depends, it's sort of on what the duration is and how resourceful we are. Some people will actually benefit, I'm sure, but there's many people who will be having at least short-term suffering economically because of the issues. Restaurants, some of them have closed, some are offering curb service. I think that some personal concerns that I have from this whole thing is that, that maybe, and this is not my idea, but maybe increased domestic violence because of border and dangers in language, studies have been expressed, or may be expressed. Working from home may advance the broadband efforts. Concepts of education may change, feeding efforts may encourage feeding at home capabilities. Maybe we need to go back to, or to increase our old, old home economics classes, not obviously for girls, but for the boys, whether what's being done. Need for international cooperation in any field, especially in medicine will be highlighted. Our emergency medicine testing and vaccine development. Involved with the silent society unemployed, not counted because of seeking work with various disorganized groups, a raised poverty and legal status, including citizenships, including citizenship. The handicap may well be the solution to many of our societal problems that have come to front, forefront during this time. Again, I'd like to say thanks to Jeff for his efforts. I'd like to ask each of us to remember our neighbors and try to be helpful wherever possible within, at the same time, trying to maintain our safety. And I think that there will be many examples of people going above and beyond the normal. And I would invite people who care to do it to send me a brief written note about outstanding things that they see in their community to my home address, 1341 Brushing Board Road, McCannan. And I'm not sure what I can do with it at this point, but we'll try to find ways. Thanks for that, man. Thanks. Any questions, I'll try to answer all. Unfortunately, over here this morning, the rest home in Morgantown has identified 20 cases, and all the reports are not back yet, so it's here, folks.
Any questions?
Sue, would you like to add anything to that?
Yes, I will, Dr. Reed did give great presentation. As far as we know, we have not received, we still have a lot pending cases. We have not received any reports in our statewide system that there are anyone in Upsher County at this time positive. We review that quite frequently. Also, there will be no news conference today with me, with the state local health department. That has been canceled because the governor is having a press conference today at noon. So next week, that'll be on Monday and Wednesday, so you guys can expect an email from me both of those days after that meeting is over. Reminder for tomorrow that our meeting with the stakeholders in Upsher County is at 9 o'clock. And we have been putting things out on Facebook to alert residents. I put one thing out, and then I backed in and asked for a story, Mark. How's you? For keeping a journal. This is simply because we're going to have to know this stuff on these people when we do these investigations. And I think a lot of times, if people aren't aware of what we do behind the scenes, that they think, oh, it's a five-minute stay, you call me, I'm positive, tell me to stay in my house, away from everybody, you know, isolate, and it'll be fine. Well, it's not that easy because everyone that you made contact with, we have to get a list of them, we have to get information from where they made contact with people during this timeframe, and it is just a vicious cycle. And we just cannot express how much tracking is done with this. And I really feel for places that have a lot more exposure than what we have because it can be months before they can get all this stuff done. So I don't foresee that this is going to be any, anytime soon. On a positive note, I'd like to thank county commissions, county council, all of our stakeholders that Dr. Reed did for all the input that we are getting and the keeping close eyes on all this so everybody is made aware of everything as soon as we get information on it. That's about all I have, if you have questions, I can answer them.
You may have any questions?
Do you have a number for the state, the paraplegic at this point?
Do I have a number for the state, what, Dr. Reed?
Yeah, positives in the state. What had us today, or last night?
Last number I had was 51.
I'm not understanding the question.
He was wanting to know if you had any, you knew what the positive tests were in the state to date.
Oh, no, I don't have that information yet. I can get it for you here really quick if they have updated the sites that we use.
Very good, and the answer?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sometimes my phone cuts in and out when I try to do some conferences.
Oh, okay.
According to, and this was updated yesterday, supposedly 51 positive cases in the state, 19 tests are pitting, and a total of 1,031 negative cases.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Susan.
Uh-huh.
Brian, would you like to add to that?
Something I'd like to add, ma'am, is the EOC is activated to the level four, which is continuous monitoring, which is established to maintain constant countywide situational awareness. I did receive 140 of the N95s, of the orders we placed last Sunday that we delivered to meetings for our first responders, law enforcements, firefighters. And that will be starting to be distributed today. The remaining stock is supposed to be overnighted when they arrive at the capital. We're still, I am still attending 2013 Mississippi Department of Homeland Security Emergency Management and along with our teleconferences. I did complete more e-team requests for PPE for our first responders and disinfectant corox wipes for the voting machines due to support of county clerk's office. We're staying ahead of the FEMA paperwork and all that, so that when it comes time to ask for reimbursement, that will be way ahead of game. And other than that, I have nothing else.
Thank you, Brian. Jeff, did I hear you join the line? Jeff Harvey?
Yeah, I'm on.
Did you have anything to add to that? I'm sorry, not to put you on the spot here, but I heard you join, and I know you're not on the agenda, but since you've been working with us through this process?
No, nothing in addition to what I heard, Dr. Reed, Suzie, and Brian, and just relative to some conversations we had and some ongoing outreach. We will continue to do that, receiving some updates from our partners so that we can consolidate joint messaging just to keep the citizenry in the loop as well.
Jeff, something I'd like to add is I'd like to thank you for all your help and giving us. I don't know what we'd do without you.
Absolutely, my pleasure, uh, if there's, whatever you have, a little bit of knowledge you share if you can, and I think you should, and that's, that's whole town, and I'm happy to do that.
Well, thank you, and thank you, Susan.
Dr. Reed, I had a case that the hospital was separating those who were sick in community care, doing the same.
This is Sue, can I?
Sure.
Another little announcement? We did receive our stuff for distribution. We have been told how to distribute the PPE that we received. We have received one package, large, well, large, several large packages, and those were given to, I think, at the hospital as we were instructed. The others, we have mostly got it all out to the areas that they told us to reach out to. We do have a few more things that we have to get delivered or have them come and pick up, but we're pretty much done with that distributing. They talk like there may be another distribution coming, we just don't know when. Like I said, I got mine the other night at 10:30 at night, National Guard. Like I said, I got mine the other night at 10:30 at night, National Guard to give it. And also, we did have a question sent to us and we did follow up on it and we did note by the state, the state practice, Dr. Khan's office, he is trying to separate his respiratory people from general illness. And if they meet criteria, they are also doing testing for coronavirus. He does have a place set up in his parking lot and the specimens are being collected and sent to a lab in Virginia. And this was worrisome to somebody, so when they contacted me, I went through all my resources and we did find out that it is legitimate, it is a legal operation, and so the state doesn't feel they need to take any action on this. So there is another area for testing here in the state. That's all I have.
Okay, does anybody got any questions? Dr. Reed, Susan, Brian and Jeff, thank you all very much. We're lucky to have you on our team.
You're welcome.
Yes, you're welcome. We appreciate being on your team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on now with items for your information. Item five, Upsher County Sheriff's financial statement for period ending February 2020. Item six, public notices. Item seven, appointment needed or upcoming. We have all the boards filled right now. Chapman case number 10-1118-01, Warren District, tax district, tax match six B, parcel number 11. That's still in certi court?
I don't know that it's been taken as certi court yet.
Okay.
There's no action or report at this time.
Okay. Our next regular meeting of the Upsher County Commission will be April 2nd, 2020, at 9:00 a.m. in the Upsher County courthouse annex.
So that's something I want to talk about just real quick on the meetings.
Oh, okay.
Just depending on which way this goes, I think that maybe, maybe other meetings possibly teleconference.
You could do teleconference or honestly, unless there's an emergency item that needs action, I don't know that you need to meet unless you feel more comfortable having a teleconference meeting. I hate to encourage you to come out in public during the governor's state and order. It's not necessary. And any of the items really on the agenda today could have been held for future time except for the budget. Of course, you have to approve that.
What about our bills and stuff, federal bills?
Well, I would recommend that the commission take action to give you the authority to go ahead and approve those for the future bills that you have and come in one at a time and sign those. I don't know how other county clerks are handling that. I know, for instance, Harrison County has canceled all of their commission meetings, so maybe we can reach out.
Well, I can, you know, it's the process. So I think if you just make a motion that you, bills are to be paid and then you'll approve after the fact, I think that covers us because we're putting it in writing what the process is going to be. And they're always open, you know, you can always come in and come in and see it before now, before we actually write the checks. They're available for anyone who would like a list to know those. But we, you know, it is, we do want to keep those bills paid. So, you know, we don't want to delay that process. But I think just, you know, saying that you're going to pay them and you'll prove it later, they'll be part of the official minutes at whatever time you pick up, then, then I'm good with that.
I agree. Debbie, Debbie looks over everything?
Oh, yeah. And if we have questions, you guys know, if we have questions, we'll reach out to you immediately before we do anything on that.
And you are able to take action on that today because you do have item number 12, which is approval of invoices for payment, purchasing card invoices, et cetera. So if you feel comfortable with how you'd be able to go ahead and take action today on how you're going to handle those.
And the only other thing that I know that I do on a regular commission meeting are the approval of my final settlements and orders for estates and everything like that. But I know if we're not going to have meetings, I can put all of that off if that's what you, you know, if we're not going to have meetings, but I can do that.
And I just, I think if we would have to do something because there's a timeline and that, and that's it, we just, we can call the meeting and do a call and conference and approve it and get it to move forward if that's necessary.
The only other thing I can do at this point that is very important is your meeting on April 21st, because that's really label that you, so you're going to at least have to have a meeting that day regardless.
That's usually a five minute meeting.
Right, yes. I'm hopeful that.
This is behind us.
Yes. And you can meet in person by that time.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to give us, give the county clerk's office the authority to continue to pay the bills and then we will approve them as we get back together for our official meetings. And if there's any questions, we can address those or meet by teleconference to approve any other orders that may come through that is time sensitive.
Would you like to include Terry's authority to move forward with any grant submissions or requests for reimbursements or management as well?
Yes.
Just tell me if you can then sign a check from the county.
Uh, yes. You'll either have to come in or you'll have to stamp it or something. I should always be the.
I'd rather stamp it for the sheriff.
Yeah, okay.
With his conditions, definitely.
Yes. We'll call you when we get them ready. This week is bill pay week, so next week will be payroll. So we'll have to order to number of checks that can be signed, but we will have to do those.
Tell me your time.
And we address the beginning of each week if a meeting is necessary. Do you teleconference or how, or what are your thoughts?
I mean. We should notify the public on that too, today, as we always would, somehow an agenda. And if we're not going to have a meeting, then we'll continue to send an email advising that the meeting's canceled.
I'll second the motion.
Check it on, please shake a five saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, the ayes have. Terry, you think you should go ahead and check with Harrison County and see what their procedure was?
I think that it's handled this way. Yeah, I mean, I think that you, the problem with not paying the bills, our rule was you all have to approve before we actually do mail the checks. So if you put it in there that we can go ahead and process that, you know, anything that we have a question, we're going to be scanning and emailing the same day if there are, or if by chance we don't have the budget provision, I mean, that's something that can happen and, you know, we don't want to spend the money before we have the money in the budget.
And then I think that's where you call the meeting and go ahead and have it. But there's no reason to have a meeting if there are items that are not time sensitive.
Well, and again, that can be a teleconference meeting.
Right.
And just as long as the president signs it, then we have the resolution or whatever happened.
And we can send everything to you, of course, via email and make it available to the press on the, at pressing presidents on the website, Upsher County Department.
The governor accepted the deadline for paying taxes yesterday for personal work. I'm not sure exactly, was that at the end of May?
It was May 15th.
Was it May 15th? Probably you can verify that date, the decade's residence, they can not, they don't have to also want to pay the taxes right now.
Right.
It's at that time.
I believe the governor office said that they're going to post initial information on their website today, and I'm sure that they're going to be reaching out to all the tax offices to provide them with the information as well. Because of course, it's going to change their operations of it. And then the income tax filing, I believe, was extended to July 15th as well to match the federal extension. And staying out this May 1st.
May 1st.
Okay, we have an last point out. Needed approval of signature and signature of fiscal year 21. Community oriented police service, cops, school violence prevention program. Application on behalf of the Upsher County and Lewis County Board of Educations. If awarded, the grant will provide updated emergency notification telephone systems to both Upsher and Lewis County Board of Educations.
Jeff, I know that you're on the line. Did you call in to represent both Board of Educations or do they have other representatives on the line as well? Are you aware?
I'm not aware for sure, but my understanding was they would have representation too.
Jody Akers, are you on the line? Dr. Stankis? Anyone from Lewis County? Well, Jeff, it looks like you're going to be on the spot again. So my understanding from following the email thread is that Lewis County will not be participating in this grant at this time?
Yeah, I believe they have recognized that the two counties are in very different places with respect to their own systems. So they just really felt at this time that the project would be kind of a divide and very different from county to county, whereas the past two years, whenever we worked collaboratively on this, the projects have been very, very similar. And they just felt like that they wouldn't be able to dedicate the time that they would want to put into it to strengthen their side. So their technology director yesterday encouraged Upsher to go ahead and apply alone. Upsher County did provide a cost estimate for the Upsher side of the project and that can proceed as we attend.
Now, what was that estimate?
Just a touch under 195,000 total. And of course, with the grant, that would be a 75 grand, 25% match.
So we don't actually have a hard document here for you to sign today because this is all submitted on the cops website. We just need your approval to submit it on your behalf. And what we've been doing with the cops grant is alternating from Upsher County Commission to Lewis County Commission as far as the oversight and sponsoring of the grant. And this is our turning in. We're getting ready to wrap up our FY19 grant, so it'll work out well to continue alternating that responsibility as that ensures that no one county is overseeing more than one cops grant at a time.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve and signature for the fiscal year 21 cops grant on behalf of Upsher County.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and settled. All favor shake a five saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, the ayes have. Thank you, Jeff.
My pleasure. Thank you.
At 11 o'clock, we have a meeting with the elected officials to further discuss continued operations as they relate to COVID-19.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and disconnect the teleconference until that time.
Thank you all for joining us. Have you got any deals?
Yes. I'll run a little back.